Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Organization Meeting and Regular Meeting. I am sitting as the Chair for this meeting during the Board's organization, which means that we are going to swear in our new Board members tonight. It will take us a couple of minutes. And also, we're going to be electing a Board President and a Board Vice President. So, kids, we're going to ask you to be patient with us. That should be a few minutes. You guys look great. It's a pleasure to have you here. How many kids have finished their homework tonight? Very cool. Very cool. How many kids have not? You're dismissed. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, thank you. So, let's open up our meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law in New Jersey, adequate notice to this meeting to the Hillsborough Township was provided on January 8th to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. The notice has also been posted at the Board of Education office, and a copy has been sent to the Township Clerk and the Public Library. At this point, I'm going to ask everybody, please rise for our pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everybody. The next item on our agenda tonight is the announcement of our school election results that were held on November 7th, 2017. Elected to the term of three years are the following: Mrs. Haas with 4,283 votes; Mrs. Harris with 3,586 votes; and Dr. Swanson with 3,363 votes. At this point, I'm going to ask all three ladies to please join me at the podium, and it's a different podium. We're actually going to go back here. We're going to reveal a new podium that we have, so it's something a little different. And it's a podium that I want to thank the Township Department of Public Works for helping us put together this podium. It's a little bit different than what we've had. It just makes it more convenient for our public when they come and speak during public session. So, ladies, if you'd please join me at this side of the podium. I'll go ahead and swear you in. Please state your names. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and I will bear true faith and allegiance
and I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
to the same
and to the governments established
and to the governments established
in the United States
in the United States
and in this state
and in this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
so help me God
so help me God.
I please state your name again
I, Lorraine Swanson
do affirm
do affirm
that I possess the qualifications
that I possess the qualifications
prescribed by law
prescribed by law
to the office of member of Board of Education
for the office of member of Board of Education
I am not disqualified
I am not disqualified
as a voter
as a voter
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly perform all duties
and justly perform all duties
of that office
of that office
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God.
so help me God.
Okay. Now that we are official, I'm going to ask Ms. Lizinski to please take a roll call.
Sure. Ms. Bogacheski. Ms. Centafonte.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Gillette. Ms. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Swanson.
Here.
Ms. Trujillo.
Here.
Ms. Haas.
Here.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the election of officers for the Board of Education. The nomination for Board President will be first, so I'm going to open the floor for nominations for Board President.
I nominate Judy Haas for Board President.
Okay. Mrs. Haas, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Are there any other nominations at this point? Okay. So, I'd like to actually close the nomination for Board President. So, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Bogacheski. Ms. Centafonte.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Haas.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Dr. Swanson.
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, let's vote for Board President. So, may I have a motion to elect Mrs. Haas as the Board of Education President?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a vote, please?
Sure. Ms. Centafonte.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Haas.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Dr. Swanson.
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, Mrs. Haas. Congratulations, Judy.
Yeah, now I get to do this.
You get to do it quickly.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, everybody, for your confidence. I really appreciate it. And now, I will accept nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Lorraine Swanson for Vice President.
Thank you very much. We don't need a second.
We don't.
And we need... Are there any other nominations?
Sure. Do you want to hold the mic closer?
Okay. Do we need any other... Do we have any other nominations? Okay. Can I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Thank you, Dina. Second. Brett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or do you need a roll call?
No, I'm good. All in favor is good, Judy.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. And now... Now, we have to elect her.
Now, we're electing her.
That was just to close nominations.
We'll do a motion and a second.
Okay. So, a motion and a second
Yes.
to name Lorraine Swanson, Dr. Lorraine Swanson, as our Vice President.
Got it.
Okay. Roll call?
Yes. Ms. Bogacheski. Ms. Centafonte.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Gillette. Mrs. Harris.
Yes.
Dr. Swanson.
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo.
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay. Now, we have a very busy schedule tonight, but I can't think of a better way to start our new year and our reorganization with a performance from our Triangle School kids. So, we'll... We'll just do that.
Yes. Thank you. Each month, we spend some time showcasing the great work that's going on in each of our schools. And tonight, we have students from Triangle School. They're going to share with us some of the work and the performance that they did during Veterans Day. Here to say some words this evening is the Principal of Triangle School, Mrs. Lisa Heisel.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lisa Heisel. I'm Principal at Triangle School. Best job in the world. About nine years ago, our reach teacher, Mrs. Cassell, asked if she could do a presentation for Veterans Day. And over the past nine years, it has morphed into something that has become very personal to me as my future son-in-law is a Marine. So, we've come to do a really large presentation. And each year, Mrs. Crick and Ms. Cassell come up with a song. And Mrs. Cassell spends hours and hours and hours trying to put together a slideshow that goes along with that. And then, we bring in these angel children to sing. So, I'm going to warn you, as I do every year at the beginning of our Veterans Day, that if you have tissues, now would be the time to take them out because you will shed a tear, I promise you, both from the pictures and the beautiful voices of our children. So, I welcome you. And you are more than welcome to sing along. The words will be on the screen. And you see in front of you about 120 students from Triangle School. We only have 365. So, this is about a third of our school. Are we ready, Mrs. Crick? Okay. Volume up. Hit the play.
Turn a picture around. Face Mr. McCray. Current. Picture parents. Now, I took care of six or six. Maggie, they want to take a picture. Cass is trying to take a picture.
And I just wanted to make one mention. If you look in this picture, all the way on the side is a gentleman sitting down. That's Mr. McCray. And we lost him recently. He was a Korean War veteran. And he's actually is a member of the Hillsborough community. And he's the man who used to own the land that Triangle School and the Middle School were built on. And he had been coming to our assemblies since the beginning. And he passed on recently, but we made some donations in his name, and we will always remember him. So, if you just give him a little thought. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Heisel, and all of the students from Triangle School. I ask the Chair at this point if we could take a 15-minute recess to greet the kids and to thank their families.
Ready? Okay. I'm calling this meeting back to order. Before I move ahead with Board Committee appointments, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, thanks to all of my colleagues for electing me to this position. I really appreciate it. I'd like to thank Greg Gillette for his efforts last year as President. I'm sure I will find out very quickly that there's a lot of additional effort that goes into being President, but I look forward to it. Thanks to all the people who ran for BOE last year. I think it's terrific that people are interested in participating in the Board, and I hope you'll continue to support the schools. My personal thanks to my husband Lloyd and my son Lenny and many friends for their help in the election and always. And thanks to the public for electing me and Lorraine and Ann. I'm hoping this will be a year of collaboration and cooperation and deliberate acts of kindness. We have a lot of challenges here, and we need everybody to get engaged. And we need to keep a direct focus on matters that contribute to making this the best educational program possible. The best way that I could start that process is to remind us and the public why we are here and what it is that we do. Therefore, I'd like to read the Code of Ethics for Board Members as the first thing I'm doing as President after that wonderful entertainment we had from the kids. The Code of Ethics for Board Members. One, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to the schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Two, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Three, I will confine my Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted with those who will be affected by them. Four, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow Board members, to see that they are well-run. Five, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. Six, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups or use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Seven, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. Eight, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer. Nine, I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. Ten, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. Those are the Code of Ethics points that we live by. And hopefully, reiterating them at the first meeting of the year will start us out on a very, very good process. Since we are down one Board Member, I have a tentative list of committee assignments which will last maybe till the next meeting or so when we select a replacement for Tom Kinst. We have to have committee meetings in January, so I tried to keep them as close as possible to what they were last year. So, what I've done is... For the Operations Committee, I would like to appoint Gene Brett with Greg chairing. For Human Resources, I'd like to appoint Brett, Ann, and Dina as Chair. For Education, I would like to appoint Dana, Gene, and Lorraine as Chair. For Governance, which is usually a committee of chairs, that would be Lorraine, Greg, Dina, and myself. For Township Liaison, I'm appointing Greg. For Cultural and Arts Commission, Greg. For Legislative Representative, Lorraine. For Municipal Alliance Representative, Gene. For Joint Council Liaison, Lorraine. For Garden State Coalition of Schools Representative, myself. For NJ SBA and Somerset County School Board Association Delegate, Gene. And for the Somerset County ESC, me. I've also thought about and will be creating a Communications Committee. And on that committee, I would like to initially place Dana, Ann, and Gene as Chair. And what I'm thinking... I'm thinking about ad hoc committees. The committees that I've already nominated are the ones that we have by policy, but we're allowed to appoint ad hoc committees for things that we think might be helpful. My sense of a Communication Committee would be to review all of the current public information and notification methods and tools that the school district uses to let parents and the community know about what's going on in our schools. I'd like to create a dashboard of Board of Ed information that would be all in one place on the website, if possible. I'd like us to look into live streaming meetings. I'd like us to look into public service announcements for the kids when they open their Chromebooks about important messages that need to be sent. I'd like to do something about improving parent involvement and generate more collaborative efforts in town and possibly create some sort of community-wide event or unifying project for the schools. Maybe for the schools directly or maybe for some charitable purpose. But I think it's valuable for a community to do that kind of thing. And if we could pull it off, all the more better. So, in addition to community reports in future meetings, I would welcome reports from our teachers and from our student representative about good things that are going on in the schools. I'd like to just provide a reminder that we're looking for a replacement for Tom Kinst on our Board. And letters and resumes are due this Friday, January 12th, at 1:00 p.m. in the business office. We had two snow days last week that have to be replaced. As per the approved calendar, those will be replaced, unfortunately, with the Monday of Presidents' Day, which is now a school day, and one of our two reserved snow days. So, we only have one more snow day left to use before we have to start using various dates in April to make up school days. So, pray for no snow. Speaking of snow, I'd like to thank the custodians and maintenance people in our district who work extra hard in the snow, ice, and bitter cold to keep our schools going. We're starting our budget... Well, we're deeply into our budget work, but if we haven't done so already, I think it's time to put the Budget Input link on the webpage.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. And you don't have to come out in the middle of the winter to give us your budget input, although we always welcome you to our Board meetings. But feel free to, you know, go to the website, send us a letter, send us something on the Budget Input website as soon as it gets on, which will be tomorrow, right? Tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. So, many different ways to provide budget input. I'd just like to give a reminder that our vaping policy is in effect now. And I was hoping that we could possibly discuss the possibility of earmarking the fine money for prevention efforts. But we'll have to take that up through our committee meetings. And I guess finally, schools are closed this coming Monday for Martin Luther King's birthday. And many organizations have turned this into a day of community service, which is a very valuable way to celebrate Reverend King's life. So, hopefully, people can find things to participate in. I'd just like to mention there are some upcoming events. Saturday, there were a couple of events tonight, well. Saturday, January 20th, I'm sure Henry will be talking about his Community Conversation that was sponsored by the HGA. There's also on Tuesday, January 23rd, in the evening at Hillsborough High School, a Drug and Vaping Awareness Program for parents. On Thursday, January 25th, this is for Board members. There is a Somerset County School Board meeting on School Finance, very valuable program. I've gone to it maybe five times already. There's a two-day conference on Equity and Discipline coming up with Part One on January 30th and Part Two on February 28th. That actually has a cost to it, but if four people go, the cost is reduced. On Wednesday, January 31st, at 7:00 p.m. at the high school, there is a Scared Straight Program for parents and students age 12 and up. There are programs starting on January 31st or Wednesday, February 7th or Thursday, February 8th, where Board members can get their skills in School Finance, Student Achievement, and School Law, Satisfying Governance 2, 3, and 4. There'll be a Central Jersey, North Jersey, and South Jersey option. We have on February 7th Coffee with the Superintendent from 7:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for those who can't make the ones that we usually have in the morning. And there's a very good program, which I really wish everybody would take, coming up on March 2nd, a daytime program in Trenton. But it's about social media, Too Much or Not Enough of a Good Thing. Very important for Board members as I've taken that course at the last conference, and there are a lot of things about being on social media that are problematical for Board members. So, I can provide that information to you, or you can take the class. Upcoming performances for our wonderful students, three of which are happening as we speak. But starting tomorrow, Hillsborough Winter Arts Festival. January 17th, Hillsborough High School District Orchestra Festival. January 24th, Amsterdam Third Grade Concert. High School District Orchestra Festival, January 24th Amsterdam Third Grade Concert, January 25th Triangle Third Grade Concert, and Woods Road Second Grade Concert. February 2nd Hillsborough High School Debate, having their Battle of the Bands, if you've never gone to it, it's a lot of fun. On February 9th is the Hillsborough High School Snowball Dance. And February 15th Triangle School First Grade Concert, February 16th High School Orchestra Pajama Concert, February 21st Hillsborough Elementary School Third Grade Concert, and Woods Road First Grade Concert, and February 28th Sunny Maid School First Grade Concert. So please, if, you know, you have nothing to do for an evening, please support our kids in all of their performances. As you could see from earlier today, they all work really hard and, you know, it's important that we as a community support them. So, moving right along, we have to take a motion to approve our regular meeting dates for our meetings that are coming up. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Standing.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the potential calendar?
I suppose it's a question, but I didn't hear back.
Okay. Do you want to discuss that in committee perhaps?
Committee's fine.
Okay. So we'll do that—we'll take the meeting—regular meeting dates, they'll be advertised as soon as we approve them, and if there are to be any change, we will notify the community in due course.
We are going to need dates, so we are going to need some approvals in order to get dates on the calendar.
Is this something for a particular month that can wait, or is this about anything on the next meeting or a couple of meetings?
No, it's just there's some—when we vary from the second—when we vary from the second and fourth throughout, I mean, some of them are—some of them are, you know, we know—I know why because we—the school's closed or whatever, but the other dates, I wasn't sure. And in the summer, I was just—I was asking a question about whether or not we wanted to keep it the fourth. I know we've run into problems before with hiring when we wait so long, and then if we get delayed for some reason or we can't make a quorum, we run into problems. So those are all my questions or whatever, nothing for the next few months.
Which means we can approve these, Dr. Schiff, and if there are amendments, we can make amendments.
Okay.
Works your day. Okay, so—
So ready to take a roll call for the—
You ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to approval of the minutes, and thank you very much, Lorraine, for your comments on the errors. I hope everybody saw that. So I assume we'll make a motion to approve the minutes with Lorraine's changes to them?
Yes.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay.
Abstentions.
Roll call?
Sure.
Now we do all in favor?
Yeah, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Got it.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Okay, that was for the executive. Now for the regular public meeting minutes. May I have a motion, please, in a second?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments about the public meeting minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any—any—any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, good.
Motion passes.
Good. I'd like to recognize that we received several pieces of correspondence, and every board member as well as our administration has received it and replied. And now we go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of the board members who have been elected to our board, especially Ann, for being new to our deus. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you, as well as our new president, Mrs. Haas, and our new vice president, Dr. Swanson. I have some wonderful news to share with the board and the community at large. Congratulations to Hillsborough High School gymnast Jocelyn Moore, who was recently voted by the current year news MyCentralNewJersey.com's Fall Student Athlete of the Year. Jocelyn, a freshman at Hillsborough High School, joined the gymnastics team this year and led the Raiders to their fourth consecutive county tournament title, as well as the fourth straight Central Jersey Section Two Championship. The online MyCentralJersey.com poll for this honor featured eight local fall high school athletes, and over 16,000 votes were cast, and Jocelyn received over half of them, over 8,000 votes. Congratulations on your success, Jocelyn, in the gym and this past fall, and congratulations on this exciting honor. I am also pleased to announce that board member Jean Trujillo is a recent graduate of the Leadership Somerset Class of 2017. Congratulations, Jean.
Thank you.
Leadership Somerset is an adult community leadership program for people who live or work in Somerset County. As part of their graduation requirements, class members, as part of a team, identify and implement team projects for the benefit of our community. One of this year's teams' projects supported the arc of Somerset County by designing and installing a sensory playground at the Jerry Davis Center for children and families in Manville. The team partnered with organizations, secured donations, and built a playground for the children who attended the center. Another team project helped expand the marketing and outreach efforts of the organization of court-appointed special advocates of Somerset, Hunterdon, and Warren Counties. Congratulations to Jean on her entire leadership class—and her entire leadership class, and thank you for your dedication to Hillsborough and Somerset County. Also, congratulations to our Director of Special Services, now Dr. Suzanne Radwan. Suzanne recently earned her Doctor of Education in Educational Leadership from Rowan University. On December 14th, Suzanne defended her dissertation titled, quote, "Professional Learning Outcomes That Teachers Experience as a Result of Implementing a Community-Based Instruction Program: A Quantitative Study." Congratulations on your accomplishments, Suzanne. We're all very proud. On Wednesday of last week, Hillsborough High School's Basic Foods Class, taught by Nicole Calafiore and Emily Mann, began work on a lab as part of the King Arthur Flour Bake for Good Kids Program. King Arthur Flour provided the baking materials, and our Hillsborough High School students began the project with the goal of donating fresh baked rolls to the Food Bank Network of Somerset County. The timeline for the project—and this was for last week—was Wednesday the students were to make the dough. On Thursday, they were scheduled to shape the bake rolls, and on Friday, they were to pack and label the donation. Unfortunately, Mother Nature threw a monkey wrench into that timeline, and our students and our schools were closed both Thursday and Friday of last week. Several of the family and consumer science teacher hating to see their students' hard work and materials go to waste braved the elements and came to school on Friday morning to bake. A big thank you goes to Jessica Haygood, Jill Calyanker, and Nicole Calafiore, who came in when schools were closed and baked and labeled 34 dozen rolls so that they could be donated to the Food Bank Network of Somerset County, who then distributed them to various food pantries, including Hillsborough's. I know that many families in Somerset County appreciate their dedication and the time that they put into this project, just simply another example of how our teachers and employees go above and beyond for their students and for the community. I also want to share with the community that yesterday, we hosted a meeting here in Hillsborough of all of the superintendents and high school principals from the entire county. This meeting was held to discuss and share how the district's high schools are responding to illegal substance use in our schools, including vaping. The afternoon's conversation also focused on broader topics of student mental health, substance use and abuse in our communities, and the resources that are available at the county level. All in attendance committed to sharing via their school communications information regarding upcoming prevention and education events and activities being held through Somerset County. We also dedicated ourselves to share best practices throughout the community, whether the support is for our staff, our students, or our parents. And that's all that I have this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm assuming we have no committee reports unless somebody wants to make one up real quick? Okay. So then we'll move on to comments from the—comments from the board and the public. First, we'll start with public input for the 2018-19 budget, and then we'll follow that with comments on the action agenda. But first, I'd just like to make a statement about public comment. We very much welcome public comment. There are two times during a board meeting when the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, before the board votes on the agenda items, that you could speak about any item that's listed on the agenda. Towards the end of the meeting, we'll have another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name clearly and your address. We please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board feels that there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, either I or the superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So with that, I'll take our first public comment person.
Good evening, members of the board. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. I'm joined by Amy Salinger, Hillsborough Education Association as well, sixth-grade teacher here at Autton Road. We're here tonight to speak as all of the officers—the other ones could not be with us tonight—but this is a statement on the budget from all of us on behalf of all of our members. Global climate change is a fact, and when it comes to extreme patterns for which—and with it comes extreme weather patterns—for which our district's inadequate heating and cooling systems are no match. Typically, in the past, the HGA officers and members have stood at this podium urging the board to act to deal with the extreme heat that our students and staff are forced to endure in many of our buildings and classrooms. These concerns have recently been tabled, as evidenced by the fact of the air conditioning for Autton Road and the middle school having been delayed, but the conditions for which our buildings were constructed no longer exist. Now, we are not only compelled to stand here and advocate that the district's most precious resource, our students and staff, be spared from the requirement that they be forced to teach and learn in environments that are so hot they would be considered unhealthy, we are also here to advocate for issues of the opposite extreme on the thermometer. Weather extremes have become our new normal. Therefore, we must acknowledge that our current systems of warming and cooling our classrooms are inadequate. Over the past week, our students and staff have encountered classrooms with temperatures ranging from 30 to 53 degrees in some instances. While some classrooms were registering frigid temperatures, the gymnasium across the hall registered temperatures ranging from 85 to 99 degrees, which is incredibly perplexing and concerning. Classrooms with malfunctioning or broken HVAC systems failed to provide heat, or worse, filled the room with frigid air from the outside. Other buildings had boilers break down or coils burst, often leaking filthy water into the classrooms. In these instances, our maintenance and custodial crews, along with their foremen, responded and tirelessly worked to correct these problems. But the reality is, is that we have failing systems, shorthanded crews, and there's only so much that can be done. Budgets that have reduced these positions and neglected the systems have created the problem and will ensure that they continue to subject staff and students to temperatures that are far from optimal or even dangerous. Few laws exist regarding classroom temperatures, but the Department of Labor requires all buildings occupied by public employees to be compliant with indoor air quality standards, including the implementation of a preventive maintenance plan. This plan must ensure the proper HVAC functioning when the temperatures are outside of the range of 68 to 79 degrees. We acknowledge that a contractor was brought in to address some of these concerns and appreciate that, but it appears that they are doing little more than addressing the issues created by neglect. POCIA indoor air quality regulations require employers to keep preventative maintenance logs for a period of three years and supply them upon request. The Buildings and Grounds Management contract also requires a creation of such a plan. We have requested this information from Buildings and Grounds Management and have yet to receive it and have reasonable belief that no such plan exists. Aside from the fact that this possibly violates Department of Labor regulations, it is simply unacceptable when it results in the conditions we are highlighting. As you continue your budget planning, we urge you to keep this information in the forefront of your minds. Our maintenance and custodial members deserve credit for what they have done. Our students deserve learning conditions that are not subject to the winds of weather. The absurdity of having a laptop while being forced to wear a heavy winter coat or a hat to stay in their classroom should never be faced by our staff or students. No student fondly thinks of their Chromebook as they duck under plastic sheeting channeling water from a leaky roof into a garbage can. No teacher or student sees the value in technology as they are removed from their classroom due to temperature or mold. We promise you that they would gladly trade the first to avoid the latter. These conditions are not the result of fluke weather patterns. This is the new reality that we must face. We can no longer ignore the basic needs of our staff and students and must invest in an infrastructure and staffing levels that will ensure all are given optimal learning environments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goodhue. I know that a couple of the things, Mr. Goodhue, that you mentioned, I appreciate that, and you're absolutely right. There is lots of things that the board is looking at. We are waiting on a facilities assessment report that will give the board a really—a good synopsis of all the things, large items on the HVAC world that needs to be addressed. That is something that the board is aware of. They're aware of that report is coming very soon, and that is something that we planned on incorporating into the budget development process. Also, we have tonight—we invited Core Mechanical, one of our contractors. Rochelle Newcomb is here, I believe, and we would—I would like her, if she wouldn't mind, just to spend two minutes talking about some of the updates, because I know you mentioned, for example, in this school, that there were some concerns with temperatures being very high. We have solved that particular problem. It took a while, but I am happy to report that a lot of the big-ticket items—we're working with our contractors, and as you said, we're also working with our maintenance staff, who's been just wonderful in trying to address room temperature extremes. And every day, we get tallies from schools, we get temperatures. All of our principals have temperature gauges, and we are engaged with Core Mechanical, who has really lived with us over the last couple of weeks to ensure the safety of our students and staff. So with that in mind, I just wanted Mrs. Newcomb to give us kind of a synopsis, because I think what that would do is clarify some of the major work that we've been doing, but I do agree with you that there's lots more. So, thank you, Ms. Newcomb. And I don't know if Mr. DeLuca is in the audience?
Yeah.
Yes. If you don't mind, if you would join with Mrs. Newcomb, and maybe if anything, if you'd like to contribute to some of the work that your men have been doing, which is just phenomenal work. So Rochelle, thank you for being here, and if you just want to give the board—
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Rochelle Newcomb, on behalf of Core Mechanical. Throughout the last few weeks, I think we've teamed up and built a very good partnership with the problems that were at hand for the extreme temperatures that we've been dealing with. One of the things that we have been working together with the staff of Hillsborough, we're making sure our employees are together with the maintenance personnel from Hillsborough. We are going to every school every morning, and it's became a regular where they're going around to all the classrooms and starting to take the temperatures prior to the kids coming in school. One of the main issues that we were seeing, that you had mentioned, was the gym at Autton Road. We did get that under control. It's coming together very nicely with the efforts of the staff and the board. We were able to get the approval, the controls are being worked on. We were able to regulate the temperature now, and we should be having a pretty comfortable climate in there going forward. I know—I can say from being at this board meeting and just the interaction that we're having, I've seen a lot of care and concern go into these classrooms and the due diligence that has been done to make sure we're all getting up to par, to make sure these kids and the students and the teachers are well taken care of. Our goal moving forward is to continue the efforts of monitoring what we're having and then really own in on the problems that are at hand. A lot of the issues—we had some boilers go down, we have material coming in, heat exchangers are coming in for the high school, those boilers in the 500 wing, and the gym, that's going to be taken care of within the next week. So we should be able to get that heated up and running and regulate it. The Autton Road gym, we have that moving along. We had many issues come in for the middle school. Very pleased to say, within the last week, we've really tackled a lot of the major issues at the middle school. The annex side of the building, they had several classrooms that were—with very low temperatures to no heat. Luckily, we got in there when everybody realized there was an emergency going on, and they were able, within two to three days, get everything up and running. were able, within two to three days, get everything up and running, and it seems to be right now that the classrooms are getting a lot more comfortable. We've taken a step. We're providing data loggers throughout the schools, so we can place them in the classrooms that seem to have the most potential problems. So now what we're doing, we're going in there on a regular basis and looking at the data that it's providing us to see which areas are the main problems and how we have to go about fixing it. So I think within, you know, over the next few weeks, we can come together and really take a look at the issues that we're having during these extreme temperatures, because let's face it, that's when we're seeing the most problems. You go through, and it's an up-and-down roller coaster ride, because we've had such mild temperatures, it doesn't always put the constraints on the systems, and then you get hit with your extremes, and everything happens all at once. And luckily, we're putting a lot of things in place now that we can record how things are happening, what temperatures are making us go to our breaking point, and we're able to kind of forecast out what needs to be done, so it doesn't happen again. So, a lot of collaborative effort. I can't thank the staff and the board. Thank you very much for all your help with it. It's making it very easy for us to get in there and accomplish what needs to be done in the very trying days. I know. Tony, thank you and your staff so much. A lot of hard work on everybody's behalf when the weather really was kicking it to us. So, you know, thank you all for all your help. Anything you guys need from us, we're here. Any questions, any specific questions I'd love to answer for you guys now.
Any questions? We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Tony, would you have any comments?
My name is Tony DeLuca. I'm the new maintenance foreman for the district. I've been in this position for five and a half months, but I've been working in this district for over two decades. I've seen the growth of the district. And I know that we have a very small maintenance staff, but we work very hard. The issues that I saw last winter were much more extreme than what I'm seeing right now. We have to look to make improvements and progress. We have to take all stakeholders into consideration, and we are doing the best. What I do is I have to prioritize on what we can do. And if a room is 67 degrees in one school, but a room is 47 degrees in another school, I need to send my maintenance man to the room where it's 47. So we do get a lot of nuisance calls, and I know that it's frustrating and it's not perfect, but we have a lot of work to do. I have a book, if anyone would like to see it. When I started this position, we were getting anywhere between 40 and 80 calls he calls a day. Now we're down to 15 or 18. Today, we had one school where we had issues. We got on, we had two men there all day working on it. And whenever I do call Rochelle or text her, her men do come and do the job, but our men also chip in. It's progress. Yes, it's not perfect, but it's progress, and we are working hard. Believe me when I tell you that. I'm not going to come up here and tell you we're not. I'm not going to tell you anything that's not true, because that's not what I am. When I was hired here, I was told it's all about the students and the staff. I was hired by Dr. Gulick, and he said, "It's all about the kids." Just remember that, it's all about the kids. And I firmly believe that. That's why I'm here still. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your comments.
Thank you both.
Are there any other comments or public input on the 2018-19 budget? Any comments on the action agenda?
Paul Anderson Woodfield, just wondering about the snow day and the calendar situation. Wouldn't it be more logical just to do away with the holidays in order as opposed to picking them? You know, you have one snow day. Well, the first holiday this year is Martin Luther King Day. The second day is President's Day. Doesn't that make more sense, or am I nuts?
Honestly, going through the calendar every year is one of the most daunting tasks we have.
But that's exactly what I'm saying. Why is that?
In terms of holidays in order, the decision that was made was that we would need to give two weeks' notice to the public if we were going to cancel a holiday, and there's less time than that coming up.
Well, you give it on the first day back to school, you'd have two weeks.
No. No.
Well, maybe next year you could do that. It just seemed to be more logical. You make things more complicated than they really are.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, people make plans for holidays, and it's very disruptive when we have to create a school day where otherwise people were expecting to either go away or have some plans. So it's a tough situation. We don't, you know, we don't relish, you know, canceling school for snow days, but we have to keep everybody safe, and that's a priority.
I do think that's something you've got to look into. You're making it way more complicated than it really is.
Okay, Lorraine.
My second question...
Can I just make a comment there? If you look at the calendar, the calendar in fact says that if there was a snow day before Christmas holidays, Martin Luther King Day would be used. But because the snow day was less than two weeks, then we go to the next one.
I read that policy, but maybe next year you could change that.
We can't, because staff, you know, you're asking to change not only for the 2,400 students in the high school and 7,500 schools, you know, where parents may have to change things around for their own things, but also the staff. So it just doesn't work. Two weeks is the maximum amount of time that we can do it within. So, you know, we discussed that at length. I was on the education committee, and as Judy said, this is a harrowing experience to go through, because you have so many different demands for the calendar. But really, we cannot realistically make a change for whatever, the 15,000 people that would be affected, with less than two weeks in effect. So, you know, that's not going to happen.
My next question is, I think somebody mentioned you have the high school snowball dance coming up.
Yes.
I assume you now have the alcohol wands that are available, that we talked about, I think in the last three or four meetings, to eliminate those problems?
I don't know what the status is, but that's the idea of doing the first one, the dance. That's the idea.
Do we have those, or that's just the idea?
We're waiting to hear.
Yeah, I don't know the status. We just passed the policy, as you recall, but the idea is to first start it at something like the dance or at the prom. The complicating things that we were talking about is when we do it at football games or other type of activities that aren't as clearly kind of confined and where we're only looking at students. That was the topic of conversation the last time I had it. I will follow up, and we'll find out if we're going to get that up and going for the snowball dance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Going once, twice, three times? Okay, then we're moving on to our action agenda, which I will turn over to our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel-related expenses. The head determination list and overnight field trip is listed.
May I have a motion and a second, please? Thank you. Any comments or questions on the action agenda for education? Okay, may I have a roll call?
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Sosan?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May I go on? Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources. First, to approve a resolution to create a position due to special education needs, to approve the following resignations, and to approve the contract changes as listed, approve the changes and transfers in assignments, approve revised mentor, leaves of absences, and the appointments of a teacher, long-term substitute, and instructional assistants, coaches, and substitutes as attached. Approve the student teachers as listed, group changes, and that's all in that section.
May I have a motion? Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions about the human resources agenda? Seeing none? Roll call.
Thank you. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Sosan?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve monthly financials, line item transfers, the memorandum of understanding between Hillsborough Township Board of Education and the Hillsborough Township Police Department. This is in terms of when during emergencies, the Hillsborough Township Police Department will have access to live streaming video. Also, to approve the addendum in a particular settlement agreement to approve changes in placements as attached.
Okay. May I have a motion and a second, please? Thank you. Thank you. Any comments or questions about the operations part of the agenda? Neither? Okay, roll call.
Surely.
Getting it done.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Sosan?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
And that's all, and there's informational items for the board's review as attached on the agenda.
Okay. We have now gotten to our second-time comments from the board and public on any item whatsoever. Please step up, state your name.
Actually, I'll let the RoboRaiders go first. Hello, my name is Daniel Lee, and I'm here representing Team 75, the Hillsborough RoboRaiders. We are a STEM promoting club, part of FIRST, which stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. This Saturday, on January 6th, our team celebrated our annual kickoff. Kickoff marks the start of the build season, where first, the organization that we are a part of releases the game online. This year's game will be Power Up, and Team 75 is very excited for this challenging year. Teams will compete to earn points by fighting for control over power switches and scales. If anyone's interested in learning more, you guys can go to YouTube and just type in FRC 2018. Team 75 has developed a working plan. Our strategy team has worked hard, and in three days, we have a plan that we are good to go with. Our design team is drafting our robot designs using CAD, which is computer-aided design, and lots and lots of copy. We'll have the blueprint done in no time, and in the span of six short weeks, we'll have a robot built. We made it to Worlds last year, and we're hoping to do it again this year. Another issue I'd like to address is that of varsity letters. The robotics club, along with a lot of other academics clubs, including the Hillsborough HS Coral Department and the Debate Club, should be able to earn varsity letters. Varsity letters represent a student's excellence in a certain area of their high school career. All students should be able to be recognized for their efforts. Team 75 meets for at least 15 hours a week during the build season. We have attended world-level competitions, and we're very involved in our own community. I hope that the board will consider this request on behalf of not just the robotics club, but on behalf of all the academic clubs. Thank you for your time. Have a nice night.
Thank you very much.
Jennifer Haley, Merritt Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I have a few questions. With regard to the current situation of the acting athletic director, we, you and me, I was still on the board at the time, at the December 18th meeting, approved Mr. Davis not to exceed 24 days, and that was starting on December 20th. If I count correctly, that expires on January 12th, this Friday. So my question, Dr. Schiff, is, do we just keep reappointing while the suspension or investigation continues? How does it work?
Yeah, we're going to need to appoint an acting during that period of time. As you're aware, the HPSA contract requires a per diem compensation set up for a period not to exceed 21 days. You are correct that it is in the process of concluding. What was also part of that is there's 20 days that the board does not need to compensate initially on it. So it's really a combined of close to 40 days, which will be coming due shortly, and I'll be making a recommendation to the board at that particular period of time.
The time period does fall after the next board meeting.
Yeah, I just, I know the information. I just want the public to know the information, so that's why I asked the question. The next question is, at the last meeting, we received a donation of $51,000 from Duke's Farm for their pilot, which is property in lieu of taxes. Have we decided how we're going to be spending that money yet?
That goes into the general fund? Yes.
No, we have not. The board, Operations Committee will probably talk about it, but no, Mrs. Haley, there has been no... There also, I want to look, and unfortunately, I don't have the answer tonight. I want to see if we built that in as anticipated revenue. If we did, then that is, that would be nothing extra, so to speak, in the budget. It's just something that we planned for. Unfortunately, I don't have that answer tonight, but if it was anticipated revenue, then it wouldn't be any additional money. It would be just money that we anticipated getting in.
Okay. I just don't remember that ever coming up in the budget conversation, so I hope that that wasn't listed as anticipated revenue, because I also want to ask, have we purchased the wands for the alcohol screenings? Because also at our last few meetings, we had parents coming up here in droves, saying their children are uncomfortable even attending these functions, which is really sad, because that's part of somebody's high school experience. So I want to know where we are. Have we even purchased them?
Yeah, as I said to the previous gentleman who came up, I'll need to go and check and to see if that's the plan for the high school dance, and I'll report back.
So we've had almost three weeks, and we just don't know if we've purchased them or not, or...
I don't purchase them.
I know you don't, but Mr. Mahmood, has anybody come to you with a purchase order?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I thought the municipal alliance was buying those, right? Is the municipal alliance buying...
The municipal alliance meets this Friday, January 12th. I don't recall us discussing, because I think at the last municipal alliance meeting, we had not passed the breathalyzer policy. Is that correct? Right, December 18th was when we passed it, so we had the municipal alliance meeting prior to passing it.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. President Haas had already mentioned this in her opening comments regarding the community conversation that will be hosted on January 20th. I would just like to formally invite all of the board members to attend that, as well as anyone else who is present or possibly watching the video. We welcome any community member above the age of 13 who is interested in taking part in this very important conversation. The registration links have been sent out through the district server, and we really do appreciate their support in that. They're also posted on our Facebook page and in various sites around. So we welcome anyone, and if there are any questions, I will stay around afterwards to answer them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So... Okay, I'm sure everybody will be very disappointed, but we're now at adjournment. If nobody has anything further to say, before nine o'clock. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Get home safely.